We're going to resume our. Next thing on the agenda is correspondence. Can I have a motion to accept? And Counselor Hawes?
Like the move that we accept the correspondent ministers AMR AMR announcement as information, please. Or information.
Thank you, sir. Maybe you have a. As your, a direction in conversation, anything regarding that letter? And nothing, I will call a question, but committee accept the correspondence for information, counsel please vote no. How about this, Karen? So we're going to move on to the reporting seven point one and we're going to start with Counselor.
Oh, I did two things. I went to the youth, the youth committee. And it was my first time with the youth committee. And. They sound like a key group of hits, so. And. I put forward they, they're going to send on a thank you for inviting letters. On behalf of the youth committee, but that was a very thoughtful thing for them to do. Signed by all the youth committee members that the grade who or grade whatever, right? Yeah, that would be quite impactful more than even the regular council sending a letter that a group of students are so thoughtful, they're going to do that. So they voted for that initiative, so happy. And then I went to the library event and that was extremely well attended. Thought that was a well put on, a good celebration of the fortieth. Birthday of the library. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Hawes?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so yeah, I want to echo what Counselor Taylor said, but yes, we had the fortieth. Uh, anniversary at our hint library on Saturday. Uh, and it was in collaboration with the CVC, uh, radio organization as well. Uh, they kicked the day off with a CBC morning broadcast, uh, at the old grind. I've got to say that was, uh, well attended. The old grind was full. Uh, and even started with people at six o'clock in the morning. So, but all, uh, all the chairs, tables were full, uh, listened to that broadcast. Um, and, uh, really had a variety of different, uh, uh, representatives in the community. One of them was for the biathlon. Uh, they talked to, to those representatives, uh, Shannon Shaw from the library. Um, Mountain, Mountain Music Festival Chair was there as well, uh, spoke to that, uh, event. So it was really well attended. Uh, and then they also supported us, uh, CBC Radio in the fortieth anniversary as well. Um, but it was very well attended. Uh, we had a number of different, uh, performers. Um, we had, um. Singers, we had band, uh, we had, uh, young people playing the keyboard. It was just a really fun afternoon. Probably four to five hundred people went through the library, um, and a lot of them, uh, which, uh, like we say, a third of them actually stayed the entire day. Watched the performance, uh, had great conversations with everyone. Um. And so, yeah, so kudos to, uh, the staff who arranged it for CBC. And CBC is, uh, really trying to, uh, reach out to the rural communities. So there's opportunities. Uh, if we as council or administration have good news stories where to reach out to them and I plan to share with the mayor, uh, the contact person. Uh, because, uh, they realize that typically when media come to small rural, uh, Alberta, it's usually when there's something's happening. Uh, fires other things, they want to come when things are happening, they're good and look for more future partnerships there as well. So, um. Also wanted to, um, so had a, a, an ASH meeting recently, uh, a lot of great conversation on the upcoming year. Um, very thankful when verge Canyon was here, he had such a great time that they actually shared other performers that are under his. Emotional, uh, uh. Whatever it is, uh, so we're going to be look forward to some new acts, uh, and bigger names coming to Hinton in the future as well. Uh, so that was really, really impressive there. And, um. I think that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. I'm so happy about the library. Counselor Stash.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things to report on. Um, wouldn't reported on this last week, but I unfortunately missed last week's meeting. So, uh. On March thirteenth, I attended the destination marketing organization meeting. A couple of things that came out of that, um. They're developing a marketing campaign that's going to, actually, marketing campaigns underway. So we're going to be seeing some different marketing initiatives coming out of the DMO. Uh, moving forward, uh, they did want to remind. Counsel and everybody might watching or listening that, uh, hintinrockies.com is live and that is the. Destination landing page website for the destination marketing organization. And then the other thing of interest on March twenty eighth, so this, uh, Thursday. Uh, Aaron Reed, who's the DMO project director. And a DMO member who was not determined, uh, when the meeting intended. But a DMO member will be appearing on CTV Morning Live in Edmonton. And they're going to be talking about tourism attractions in the Hinton area and Hinton as tourism destination. So that's interesting. If you've got nothing to do on, uh, the morning of March twenty eighth, then you'll have to tune in and see that. So it's, uh, March twenty eighth at eight forty-five. And the other meeting that I attended recently was the hidden youth advisory council meeting. In addition to what Counselor Taylor already reported. Uh, there's presentation and discussion from Chief De Bodra. About naming a fire truck and, uh, advisory council supported that. So at some point in the future, they'll be coming forward with some suggestions for, uh, name of what was fire trucks?
All fire trucks.
All the fire teams. So how many is that?
Uh, through the chair, that, that would be all the front line trucks. So they'll be naming five or six of the trucks.
Uh, and Chief De Bodra, you give them some criteria, which I don't remember. So if I could look to Chief De Bodra. What are the criteria for the names of the fire trucks? I, I asked the. Youth council to use the criteria of, uh, naming the trucks after local names, uh, local places, landmarks. And, uh, animals that are into just to this area. And, uh. Yeah, they're taking on that project with the Desto and look forward to what they come up with. And the other thing that came out of that meeting was that they were working on their, uh. Their annual presentation, their spring presentation to council. So they picked their presenters and we're working on the actual presentation during the meeting. So council can look forward to that presentation at the April sixteenth meeting. And that is all I have to report today. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. I, I have quite a big report, but I'll talk fast. So March thirteenth, I was able to attend the Tamara Health, um. Zoom session. Very informative, very educational, and I'm very happy that I was able to zoom in to that. On the fourteenth and fifteenth of March, I attended the leaders caucus in. In, uh, Edmonton and SASS Leaders Caucus. It's not just open to mirrors and CEOs. We as counselors are all individuals within our municipality. So some of the things I learned at the caucus was. How, I, I was hearing how ill prepared people are when they decide to become a counselor. And now they're seeing a lot of by-elections because people. Come in, they get voted in to be a counselor and then they go, I didn't sign up for that. I'm not doing that. So, um. And it's unfortunate because the by-election costs that municipality money. So what I'm kind of thinking is, um, Alberta, even is, is going to be doing some. Pre-training for people who are interested in becoming a counselor. And I think that's very important. Uh, another thing they talked about is the importance of educational session training during your counselor's term. We, none of us were born counselors, you know, we all have to learn. And educate ourselves. I, I felt that the overhead presentation at the leaders caucus was. Excellent. And I'm trying to get that presentation and share with people who might be interested. We had a, um, a lady, um. Wonderful spokesperson on the drought issue that we're facing in Alberta. She's part of the drought committee and the government relies on her. Expertise, uh, quite a bit. They also talked about water conservation in municipalities. Another thing, uh, there's a fellow there who talked about, um, good social networking and communication with our citizens. How to talk to our citizens, when to talk to them, what to talk to them about. That's, that's key. If we let the issue fester, it's going to faster and get bigger. So that was good to listen to him. Public engagement. There is an art to engaging the public. And we got to learn that art. Another thing they talked about was the dissolution of villages and small towns, which is becoming more and more. The government said loud and clear, you come and talk to us. Prior to you thinking you're in big trouble because we may be able to help you. Prevent dissolution of your community. Another thing I heard about meeting over and over again at leaders caucus and that made was, um. You can go fast alone. But he can go far together. So they're really pushing work together. With the government or other municipalities. Something else that was brought up was the recall. A lot of recalls are happening in Alberta. Uh, and much, so. Anyway, I found the, the, um, leaders caucus and the RMA very educational beneficial in this council. So that's it. Go ahead, sir.
I have a question regarding your comment about, uh, the dissolution of villages and. And smaller municipalities and the government saying you should come to us and talk to us. They mentioned what any of those strategies for what those municipalities went through?
You know what? They didn't, but. But I'm going to go to CNN, but you know the number one cause of dissolution for the villagers and towns? You know this? It's their infrastructure. They have infrastructure issues and they don't take care of. And, oh, they have not taken care of them and they've allowed them to get worse and worse over time and they've allowed the effects of, so CEO.
Through the chair, the rest of the committee, the, the solution has been fairly consistent of. Going through a dissolution process where they look at all the infrastructure and then determine how much the municipalities or the. Surrounding rural municipality is going to have to pay to keep them viable. Um, or they could hope to be, not be viable. And municipality will be responsible for all of it. So. It's not a great solution, but they've been fairly consistent with that. Type of solution that, uh, giving that issue to the rural municipalities for quite some time. Go ahead, sir.
And if I can follow up, that's my perception what the major issue is, is that the municipalities. In a lot of cases don't have the. The tax base and tax revenue to be able to address their infrastructure issues and, uh. And then by default, it becomes the, the problem of the, the neighboring rural municipality, which I don't think is fair. And I think it should be addressed way further in the process. So they talk at all about. Trying to find some balance between, uh, revenue and expense of the municipality compared to the surrounding rural municipality.
I didn't find they did. I found that they touched on things, but there wasn't any big conversation going on. But I do know that we can initiate that conversation and get more information.
I don't want to turn this into a speaking point. Anything like that. It was tried before and it wasn't addressed. It was completely skipped over actually. And I think it's going to continue to be a problem and it's just going to become a bigger and bigger problem as far as I'm concerned. And I think at some point. That, that disparity between the municipalities and the rural municipalities surrounding it was going to have to be addressed. And more equitable solution is going to have to be found at some point. Otherwise, it's just going to continue happening.
I wish you would have been on microphone one, two, or three and turned that up because that would have been excellent. Um, yeah. There was something else I was going to say about the, um. Oh yeah, you know what? When they were talking about, um, recall and, oh, code of conduct, there are so many code of conducts going on there. It's just ridiculous. I found myself thinking just how lost I am to come from Hinton. The asset management was a discussion that I was having with a lot of municipalities. We have an asset management that we're working on right now. We, I, I am so proud of the work that we've done with. To keep this community safe and moving forward. I'm done. So, um. Now, our next step, oh, CAO. Administration report.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, nothing additional to report, but the, uh, action pending list and the action complete list has been included for your information. So if there are. There is any, uh, questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions on the.
So MD thirty-one sixty-three, this is, uh, seven thousand dollars for the emergency response reserve. I see that that's coming forward April twenty-third. Is that, um, do we have a response yet from our provincial? Uh, MLA in regards to that? Is that what's intended or?
And then through the chair and the rest of the committee, we have had no response that I've been made aware of, um, at all. Um, and, um. The matter of the second motion there, that council of directors administration returned a report. Is, I hope, will be in place for you to force it to. Currently, there's, there's no, there's no need on the part of help for help.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah.
Go ahead, sir.
So when did we send, uh, our, our MLA, the, the letter asking for money? Asking for our money back for the emergency. Uh, response reserve. We did that in like January, right?
I'm, I can't give you the exact date, sorry to say, but this motion was first made on the tenth of January and the letter went out not long after that. I would say by the end of January, that letter was out.
Okay. Could I make a motion that we direct our mayor to follow up on, uh, where the response is with the MLA? I'd like to make a motion that we direct our mayor to follow up on the response of, uh. Uh, our letter in January, uh, asking for, uh. Our fund, our, I don't know the wording, but. Asking for a response to our letter, uh, January on the, uh, emergency, uh, response money may lay out. I think it's appropriate that you phone and ask him. After two months. Well, that we follow up, uh, on the letter sent to MLA regarding the emergency, uh. Uh, sheltering and fun and, uh, I guess, and the funding and the money we spent, I guess.
Taking the disposition of the invoice.
Yeah, something like that. Yeah, that's a fine follow-up on the request for assistance.
So counsel, we do have a direction on the floor. This is a really conversation.
And I guess I would have a question, um, questioning what the intent is. Are, are we actually looking to get compensated? Are we trying to make a point?
With that, we took counsel.
Yes, it would be a counsel to Taylor. I don't think administration is.
I'd like to look for some sort of response indicating. What the government's doing regarding this issue, whether it be provincial or what. I mean, sure, I'd like our money back, but. Even if he came back to us with some sort of response that said. That the government's addressing this issue provincially for all the communities have problems and here's the, like Todd Lowen did, that, 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 that. I think I'm just asking for. Yeah, follow up, you know, what's, what's, what's your response?
Yes, sir.
I, if someone could refresh me what the original content of that letter was. Was it simply a request for reimbursement or was it a request for an explanation? And, uh, what the government like to do in moving forward to address these issues?
Well, CEO, well, I can answer that question. So we, we did ask for the reimbursement on the funding. And also asked for action on the, on the, um, the mandate that had been given to community, I believe it's community. Uh, the Ministry of Community and. Family Services on sheltering for the homeless, emergency sheltering homeless, that mandate letter. I'm just trying to look it up right now. I'm almost there.
Do you have a turn?
Almost.
We, we can move on while we have, uh, while we get back to Cuba.
Counselor Hawes?
Yeah, to answer, uh, uh, way in on Counselor Stashings, I mean. I think for me, it was a point of, yeah, I'd like to get the seven thousand dollars back, but I think it's also the point that we're not going to sit back and just. You know, still owe seven thousand dollars without asking for it back because it is their responsibility and I'm of the same mind is, you know, what is the response? Uh, and I think that, uh, you know, two months, as Counselor said, the Counselor said. Taylor has said is a reasonable amount of time to respond back to something like this, uh, resident, so. But yeah, that's my, my take on the letter was both. Maybe we'll get it back, but also make a point at the same time, so.
When, in reading that, it's not really asking for feedback. Uh, and information on what the province plans to do again. Exactly, you know, talks about the task force and what they did in the past and what we did. To, uh, to address this issue and less about, and less concerned about recovering the seven thousand dollars. Than I am about what the government intends to do moving forward on a more permanent basis to find solutions to matters like this. This isn't a responsibility that the town should bear. This is a provincial responsibility. And they need to step up and do something to address this. This is not the first time a request like this has come to us and. And because we are the ones that are closest to the people that are affected, we're the ones that wind up responding to it. And, and, and even though I have no issue doing that and I supported it, it's still not right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Taylor.
I think that's how you do what you want to do is by keep. Um, keep, keep reminding them of their responsibility and enough, enough of us do that provincially. And we do AOMA resolutions. It's all pressure that helps.
Hawes?
Well, and I think I'm, I'd, I'd like to hear the response because we have. You know, a discussion coming to us on April twenty-third and our insurance costs, you know, for extreme weathering for, for a local. Uh, organization. So I mean, that's another, you know, we're already looking at that. It'd be nice to see what they have to say and, uh, you know, with the resolution for, for the fall as well, seconding the red deer. So just. Yeah, I, I'd like, I'd like to have some word on that before we have that discussion.
Counselor Stash.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to propose an amendment to the meeting, please. What one is out there? Uh, I'd like to add. Uh, and specifically request. Information. Regarding. What action. Provincial government. Is taking. To immediately address. If the issue of. Emergency. Homeless sheltering. If I could speak to it, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I think that's an important point to need to add to. Just the follow-up for the request for reimbursement. I think it's important to get the information on what the province is intending to do. Um, that's, I, I want an answer from the government. I want to know what they're planning to do right away. It's all fine that we're going to have a resolution in the fall, but that means legislations, like we're. Two years away. I want to know what they're doing now to address this so communities like Hinton don't have to keep stepping up to the plate when things happen.
Thank you. I will support the amendment. I, I think it's strong enough to stand alone to almost be the direction. Not just an amendment, but I will support it here after. So now I just got to ask, and I probably wrote this a couple of minutes ago, this amendment, do we? Need to have a formal vote? We do need to have a formal vote. Yes, according.
And my understanding is because this is a formal amendment, that it does have, I think, a formally vote.
So counsel, we do have an amendment to the. Initial. Direction. And if there's no other conversation, I'll call a question. Um, and specifically request information regarding what action the provincial government is taking. To immediately address the issue of emergency homeless shelter. Please vote no. And that's true. Thank you. And I'll move on to our, um, in motion. The discussion before I call questions? Nothing. But committee direct the mayor. The mayor. To follow up on the letter sent to MLA bond regarding emergency sheltering of the homeless in January twenty twenty-four. And follow up on the request for assistance on specific request information. We regarding what action the provincial government is taking to immediately address the issue of emergency homeless shelter. Generally regarding custom. Etchange. The spelling. Oh, thank you. You're welcome. Counselor Kase will know. And that is Karen. Thank you. So we've had the administrator. Reporting. Then we went to Counselor Taylor and now. It's time to have our close session. So I would need a motion to move to a close session, please. And we got a motion from Counselor Taylor to move to a close session. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks for this next secretary, David Campbell, on tour. Looking after us.
We'll call this committee of the whole meeting by extension at, um, eighteen twenty-seven hour. Yes. Counselor Hawes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'd like to move the committee. Seek consensus, uh, requesting administration to proceed with a draft purchase and sale agreement. For option one and bring the draft agreement back for council review and direction to a future council meeting. For option one and bring the draft agreement back for council review and direction to a future council meeting as discussed.
Thank you, sir, we do have a direction on the floor, council, any discussions? Seeing and hearing now, I will call questions, or, yes. I don't, I don't have it here, so um. The committee seek consent, requesting administration to proceed with the draft purchase and sale agreement for option one. And bring the draft agreement back for council review and direction to a future council meeting as discussed. Council, please vote now. And I'll get back to the top. So that is Karen. Thank you. Counsel, anything else before we, um, adjourn the session? Let me have a motion to adjourn, Counselor Hawes.
Let's move that we adjourn.
At seven thirty, thank you, sir, and we will vote on that. To adjourn. And. So on your screens, and please vote now. Thank you, everybody, for a wonderful meeting. Just wanna tell you tomorrow the biathlon starts and I will be out there, um, representing the council, and if any of you wanna be there, I'd love to see.
Then you know.
I have to be there on eleven fifteen. Yeah.